We're good, we're live, okay. This is the meeting of the cushion board of selectmen. Today is Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. All rise please for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item for approvals, the consent agenda and the minutes. Well, consent agenda first of all. Does someone motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Mr. DeRoe.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got the minutes of Wednesday, September 25th, 2019 for approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2019, regular session, board of selectmen meeting.
Second.
Just discussion items, just want to, have we heard anything, just items covered in the minutes regarding the veterans housing at the library? Any progress on that? No?
I wrote right on my minutes, Mr. Chairman, where are we with this? So can we figure that out? Because if we're not doing veterans housing over there, maybe the board might decide to take this to town meeting or an article to do something different with it.
And also Comcast, where are we with Comcast anywhere?
So we have--
I know a bit of attorney.
Yeah, we have the hearing. And the attorney is working on or write up with me based on the hearing and like the minutes of the meeting to present to the selectmen and also the final permit for you to look over.
And we need a public hearing as well.
So I'll get that info over to you once I get--
So it's out there, it's progressing.
Town council review it.
Yeah, he's looking at all over right now.
And I think we've got special, we hired, attorney specializes in cable contracts. That's dealing with that for us. Okay, meeting appointments. Old Business Chief, P.J. Keating, public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Chief Gallagher.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good evening, it's Leonard. Happy New Year. So here we are. From what I understand, our goal tonight is to come out of this meeting with a decision by the board on a public hearing for the issuance of a land use license to P.J. Keating. As just to recap from the last time I stood here in brief view, nothing has changed. The application to the Department of Fire Services, the fire marshal, to receive their authority to move or to erect the storage tanks for combustible liquids, two 20,000 gallon tanks and one 30,000 gallon tank is still pending at the marshal's office. They've done a preliminary review. The box that they cannot check yet is the fact that the town hasn't issued the land use license. So they need that to be acted on with the ultimate decision forwarded to them so that they can either continue or stop the process. So as you know, P.J. Keating is moving the asphalt plant to the front, the South Main Street side of the plant, away from where it currently is operated, way out back. The silos that you see are for the storage of the actual asphalt itself, solid. There's eight new tanks there and all the accessory equipment. The containment area has been built for the moving of these tanks. They are now off their season for manufacturing of asphalt. They shut down in early December. So they are in the process of moving those tanks. We had the discussion about whether or not that's a smart business decision for them. I'm assuming that they understand there's a modicum of risk to invest time and energy in moving something that the Board of Selectmen may not give the necessary document for. But that's for them to assume that responsibility. So the state law allows the board to hold a public hearing with the public to discuss the use of that land for the purpose of storing certain combustible liquids over a certain amount. And the 70,000 gallons that are stored of liquid asphalt, not the solid, that's the end result. The liquid is what is licensed by the state, but first requires a land use license from the board. So that's where we--
Yes, go.
So the eight tanks that actually holds the physical asphalt after it's being done, being combined with the three tanks, diesel, the AC-20--
A C-T, yep.
I think I read on it, it's a miner.
Yep. And aggregate, sand, stone, the like.
Look, that's being stored in the three tanks, correct?
No, that, the liquid, so think of it as baking a cake.
Yep, the three tanks are the fuels.
The three tanks are the, you know, the eggs and the milk and the water, if you will. And off to the side you have the powder and sugar and everything else.
And the eight tanks.
No, off to the side, in bins.
Okay.
Those components, based upon the formula that they have a request for, because I'm getting a crash course on asphalt production. It's not all the same. So they're producing their A-B-C formula. There's a certain mixture. It goes into an oven and then it gets shot up and put into those storage tanks, those silos, from which trucks will drive under, as they currently do. The big trucks that you see going up and down South Main Street, they drive under the silos, certain amount is dropped in and they drive off.
So do we want to pick a date for that hearing, chief?
We can accommodate, I guess there's a--
I have more comments I want to, but let's get that on the calendar. I've got more comments I want to make, but why don't we try to get that on the calendar first?
We just have a seven day notice period ahead of the hearing that you have to get the notice out.
Any preference?
It's your meeting.
Gentlemen, well, day of the week.
A little further out, to do a little more due diligence. Move on, maybe perhaps contacting town council and seeing what the board's absolute rights are and wrongs are.
Town council's offered to be there at the hearing.
Yes.
I think it's important, legal expertise at this meeting.
Tuesday, the 28th?
I'm not available.
Okay.
This is a difficult month on my end.
We're scheduled on March 4th anyway. I'd like to, you know, I want, we were talking about notice to the residents and what that looks like. I'd like to make sure we get the notice out to a big circle and let, so I'd like to allow a little, I don't feel any urgency to get this done quickly.
So you're talking February. Let's go on to February.
I think we're in February. The 11th?
The 11th.
Feb. 11th?
That works on my end. It's a Tuesday night.
The time?
Six, when are we doing at six? Just to allow people time to get home and--
Six P.M. And we also have to determine where we're going to hold this public hearing because the chief's YouTube video has had over 1,200 hits on it explaining the situation at P.J. Keating. So can we anticipate a rather large crowd or should we anticipate?
Should we try to do the state council on aging?
I think council on aging is probably--
Chief Gallagher, how many individuals can we hold in the council on aging without breaching fire?
An excessive 80.
Eighty, that's it? We've had past P.J. Keating meetings where in that building, I don't know how many people we had, but it worked well for that. And we could go to the schools as well, but--
How about if we establish it, set it for the council on aging? We'll keep eye to the street. If we're hearing a lot of chatter, then we can move to the schools if necessary.
Just have to make sure there's no basketball. Right now it's like basketball and whatever the school's sports things are going on, so.
So February 11th, 6 o'clock at council on aging at this point. Town council, we can try, let's run up to town council.
For sure that date's good with town council as well.
The confusion, I think, or my confusion at this point remains what, Mr. Hebert and I were having a discussion prior. I mean, what, are we pretending we've got authority over this thing? And it, you know, I don't want to, it feels like we've got to jump through hoops. We've got to have a hearing. We've got to listen to all the neighbors say, we hate it here, we don't like the idea, we don't want it. Why is it going there? And then it just complies with regulations and we get put there anyway. So if, are we wasting our time by having this public hearing? My opinion, I'd never want to sign anything that moves that plant to the front of that property. In my opinion, if you're asking me to sign something, I don't know why I ever would, just using common sense. But common sense and the law sometimes often conflict.
So we are veterans of processes similar to this where there's regulatory approval beyond the town, either the state or the federal government, as we ran into with the LNG facility, that kind of stacks the deck in the favor of the petitioner as long as all the required necessities are complied with. However, and I'm glad Mr. Creer is here from the Board of Health, I think it's important and I think it's expected of the townspeople that we be straight with them. And by that, I mean the question that you're being asked is to issue a license for P.J. Keating to host combustible liquids over a certain quantity. In 1995, town gave them permission. They gave them a license for that use. There's been no violation of that license. There's been no code violations when it comes to the storage of those components. The difference is you are now looking at this anew because they want to move it. Legal minds would have to opine as to whether or not when someone has been in compliance for the last, since 1995, it was given the approval originally, if there is justification for denying that license, for denying the land use license at this time. There is, so I think we really kind of need to set the table here as to what the expectations are. And legal counsel will come back, I believe, because they've done so in informal memos to us and said that there is a process and the fire marshal's looking at that process. There is appeals to the licensing process, which is all very regulated. So, you know, we are to a certain extent, Mr. Chairman, in a box when it comes to the issuance of the license. Having said that, there are conditions. The Board of Selectmen is the licensing authority, can put any condition that they want, from my understanding of communications that Ms. Hebert has shared from town council on the license. And as a member of the Soil Board, you know that we've gone to great lengths to put into the permit certain requirements. So the permit that P.J. Keating needs to operate their entire facility, not just the asphalt plant, the entire facility, quarry and the asphalt plant, has a punch list of things that they're saying that they are going to abide by. And those are, Joe, help me if I'm wrong, but there's--
State laws.
State laws, there's regulations for air emissions and--
Yeah, it's the federal laws, the wetland laws, the state laws, the local bylaws, it's everything and then a little extra.
Right. So we're of the belief that you could also add, so you've got the teeth in the permit. The question has always been, or the missing piece of this has been enforced. And that's why we're excited by the town moving towards a part-time health agent who is really going to be the boots on the ground at P.J. Keating on a very regular basis, making sure that that list of five or six items that they've agreed to when they submitted the permit is enforced and is being complied with. We've never had that before. You know, Mr. Creer is a one-man show when it comes to doing site inspections and the enforcement. And this will allow someone to put in-- 20-plus hours a week?
No more than 20.
20 hours a week? You know, if it is so decided, there at that facility, making sure that all those boxes across are checked. We also have, and we discussed this at the last meeting and we're developing this for your consideration in the near future, the development of a nuisance abatement plan. We need to be prepared for when they turn that switch on, if they're given the permission by this board and by the state. When they flip the switch to start making asphalt close to South Main Street, one would anticipate that there's going to be complaints. And we've discussed as a group, having that infrastructure put together to handle those complaints, not only to acknowledge them, but to seek some resolution for those. So as we build that plan, and we have to do it cooperatively with P.J. Keating, kind of building the framework internally, then we'll work with them to see how reasonable we can be as far as resolving those concerns. Compliance with that document, nuisance abatement plan, would be incorporated both in the permit and I would argue also in land use license. So now we've kind of locked them in twice to agreeing to address concerns that the citizens will have when light comes in, noise comes in, or odor or dust. So you would have them as much as, as much influence as you have issuing a license, that could always, or not issuing a license, that could always be legally challenged. And we kind of lose control of that when it leaves this building. But we can construct the license to kind of hold their feet to the fire to make sure that not only are they abiding by that list of items they agree to in the permit, but we're adding on top of that a nuisance plan that they've been told to agree to because it's contingent upon you issuing the license, that we work fairly with them to develop and one that should be able to address the concerns of the citizens.
So, I mean, in many ways, this process might just be symbolic. At the end of the day, we're going to be required to sign off on this license. But we're not going to be able to say no. But we can say yes, but, and the but is conditions under which we're going to give it to you, but these are the things that you need to do in order to keep the license.
So the Soil Board develops the permit.
Yep.
Board of Selectmen approves the permit. If you incorporate into that permit, that checklist and a statement by which they're going to comply with the nuisance abatement plan, and they fail to do that, next year, when that permit comes to you, you have the authority to approve and not approve.
That's annual renewal for what, the Soil Board permit or the--
The Soil Board.
Soil Board permits is an annual.
It's annual, but--
This is a one-time though.
No. The land use license is one-time.
Is one, that's one time. The Soil Board's annual.
Is annual.
Yes. Yeah, the Soil Board permit, I was involved in the process, a member of the Soil Board, and that permits got teeth like it never had before.
Correct.
Mr. Creer spent a lot of time with our engineers, consulting engineers, putting all the appropriate references in the law to make, to give us some teeth to make sure they're complying.
Correct.
You know, I think we need monitoring now. But I think it's good to have a public hearing. I think it's good to bring the residents in to talk about life around the quarry and the things that maybe P.J. Keating needs to address going forward, especially with the asphalt plant on the street now, which is not a good idea.
And an understanding that when they leave that hearing and if the board were to issue that license, that's not the last time they see you, gentlemen. They will see you again next year when they come before you for-- Is it, does Board of Selectmen issues the--
Yeah, so we, the board, the way that the Soil Board is set up, the Soil Board itself reviews and approves their application for their permit. The Board of Selectmen actually signed the license to operate for the year. But the Soil Board, so that's the two parts. So you've got the Soil Board in it and you have the Board of Selectmen in it. So that's how that works. We approve the application, send it over to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen then choose to issue it or not because you ultimately are the ones that sign it.
We reviewed the application. So as Joe, Mr. Creer is alluding to, as the Soil Board goes through their processes, they look at the fees and things associated with it and then it comes in front of the board. We review the application again from the Soil Board after their approval. And if we want to make changes, we can kick it back to Soil Board, have them go through the process of other change recommendations.
Sitting in both seats, I merged it all into one.
It comes, yeah, it comes back, but--
Mr. DeRoe. So a stronghold, if you want to call it a stronghold, is more in the permit than in the land use license? In the sense that we can put restrictions in the permit, but in the land use license, if they're in compliance with state and federal guidelines?
For the issuance of the permit.
For the issuance?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can include in the permit that they must abide by the nuisance abatement plan. And my non-lawyally recommendation was, instead of pinning that just to the permit, pin it also to the license. And if council comes back and says, well, you know, it shouldn't be on the license, well, we still got it on the permit. Or the other way around.
Correct.
So, you know, best case scenario, you've got it documented two places and them agreeing to it in two places. Well, I'm sorry, not even agreeing, being told that they have to comply in two places. Worst case scenario, one, but they can't get, they can't work without both.
Correct.
So I don't know yet, but I've been doing some research on it. I'm not so sure by the change of the land use license that we don't have a say in that. So they're operating those tanks way out back right now. They have the petrochemicals, I'll call it, instead of milk and flour. So the petrochemicals in the back pot of that property. By then moving that to the front, it's a change of use.
Right.
Which I believe that this board should have some authority over that change of use, just as the ZBA would if you were going for a change of use for a business license, right? You're changing the use of that, you'd have to go back in front of the ZBA. So I'm not so sure that this board doesn't have any jurisdiction over--
Over where it goes on there.
Over it even moving.
Over it moving.
You know, I think that, I don't know this for sure, so I don't want to say for sure, but--
I just reminded, Mr. Gasper, that unfortunately on industrial properties, we gave up the site approval process. So, you know--
They can move--
I'm not sure if that regulation, you know, if that authority is there. It could be, but what we used to hang, I had on, which was the site plan review, that's been taken away from us once it was reclassified as an industrial property. They would have had to come to the town with their plans and the town would have had to approve it.
Right, yeah, I understand. I'd rather not go back in time and talk about me disagreeing on that article.
Understood.
You know, I was the only one doing it. So I sit here, I guess, pretty angry that I'm sitting here in this position right now, knowing that these folks, the residents surrounding that property, are going to have a bigger problem. So I'll look at it as best as I can, do my research as best as I can, run the things, different ideas by town council because I would definitely want a legal opinion because I wouldn't want to make recommendations to the board arbitrarily for it to have no sticking point. But I think that if they're going to move that facility, I'm with Mr. Cabral, they're going to move that facility, they're going to be good neighbors, a lot better neighbors than what they have been. I'll leave it at that.
Anything else, Mr. DeRoe? And I know there are some residents here. I would, you know, collect your thoughts. February 11th is the time P.J. Keating will be in, will be there. Board of Health will be there, other departments in town. Does you have anything you want to say?
I was just wondering, what is their purpose of moving it upfront rather than leaving it?
They've had a hard time.
It's like, there's no, I mean--
They're looking to take the rock.
They need more memory to blast.
It's in the way. The asphalt plant where it is right now is in the way of--
Is in the way of--
They're making a bigger quarry.
Yeah.
I mean, if, I don't know if anybody passes by that location, say at around 4:00, sometimes 5:00. You're in a haze. How much more of a haze is it going to be when you're? And I mean, we live on Dalton Street. You open up your windows, you've got all that fine dust in your window sills. Or, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter how hard you try to keep your house clean. So not only is it that, but I mean, you come through it. I can't imagine living right across the street, never mind we were a few blocks away. I mean, it makes me feel like, let's put the house on the market before people realize exactly what's going on. I mean, yes, you said the license was approved, if I'm using the right, for the location that it's at. That, and we've had no problem, well, I don't know if you said no problems, but whatever.
Well, with the tanks.
Tanks.
Because that's what the discussion is limited to, those storage tanks. We've had no problem with those. Have we had problems with dust? Yes.
A lot, yes. A lot of dust.
Dust cracks, whatever.
But the tanks where they're located doesn't affect, I don't think, the immediate neighbors. But being up front where they're planning on moving it, I just, I think--
I've just been reminded you should identify yourselves if you speak.
I'm sorry, I was going to try to get ahead, Rita.
Rita and Raymond Bellerby.
And what street do you live on?
Dalton Street.
Dalton, oh, neighbors, okay.
Yes, right across, and Lauren Bill Perry at 36 Dalton Street.
So February 11th is, bring your neighbors? I mean, it's the time, we're going to be collecting comments from neighbors up the quarry. That would be the time to come and--
A lot of people don't even know about it.
Say that again?
A lot of people don't even get, we never get a letter about it, so--
Well, there were at least two hearings in the past, so we're going to--
Yeah, we, you know--
Well, tonight was just basically a talk and discussion--
Decide when you're going to have the meeting.
Whether we're going to have the hearing, right?
As part of the notice, the applicant will have to send out letters to every resident within a certain area.
How big a circle do we want to draw?
Let me just see, it's on here.
At least a half a mile?
We're around Century House is where Dalton Street is, so.
You're right.
They may be required to only send it out to within 300 feet.
Yeah, we want to go big.
And we, the board, have discussed this in the past, saying that we want to have a much bigger outreach to our residents.
Chief, any sense as to how big that circle should be?
So we talked about--
We can use the Code Red, reverse 911 system, make it as big as you want, Mr. Chairman.
Can we do that?
So legally, the letters will go to all owners of real estate abutting on said land or directly opposite said land.
So that's not big. We need, we need half a mile anyway.
But like Chief said, we can use reverse 911.
Yeah, let's do that, let's plan on that.
Can you post this meeting, please, on, like you did on your website? Maybe we can post it on the town's website as well, so it's in two places. I know that you've done a great job. You've drawn a lot of attention to the fight upon its website, via the P.J. Keating discussion. So I think that those followers will be looking at it and seeing the updates. And it's basically 30 days, a little better than 30 days away. So I think it's a ample opportunity. Unfortunately, we may have some snowbirds that are taking off.
We already have some, on the next street.
We're usually not here, actually.
We'll hear the majority. I think it's important for you folks to understand that the board is going to listen to the majority. I think that your concerns will be shared as a majority, right? I mean, I don't think anybody's going to come to the table and give you anything different than what 50 residents are going to do, the 100 that are surrounding there, let's just call it 100. I don't think that anything different is going to change in that discussion. I think the board's already very well aware of the nuisances and things of that nature. And again, Mr. Creer, our Board of Health agent, Chief Gallagher, Mr. Cabral of the Soil Board, Ms. Hebert, we've, you know, the town's been doing its job now, trying to lock its teeth into this thing. So I think that, you know, we're in pretty good hands right now and I, you know, hopefully we'll be able to make them comply and be a better neighbor because I can tell you right now, I don't live over there. I live by White's Farm Dairy, but I travel--
We can send them dust, we can send them some dust.
I travel, I travel down Main Street quite often, my friend, and I'm disgusted with the road conditions over there, the dust on the--
Talking about a road, they're making a road up Pembroke. And is that going to be for the trucks to go in and out of also?
No, no. So we had talked a while back about trying to make a, an exit off of, I think it was 240, Chief, or 240. But there's some complications with that because it would involve the feds and things of that nature for state highways and regulations there. So I, you know, that was something that we had looked at and talked about a little bit, but it seems to be a dead end on that to try to deter those trucks and get them off of Main Street altogether with. So, you know, I guess, you know, I know I'm going to do my homework on seeing what can be done, what other places that have quarries in New England, be done, what other places that have quarries in New England, what kind of things that they've done, the ideas that they've had and implemented, that's part of our job, and, you know, we're going to hopefully bring that to the table and bring that to town council and say, hey, can we do this? We, I've seen it in, you know, Greenwich, Connecticut, just say, maybe I find some things, Mr. DeRoche might find some things, Mr. Cabral. So, we'll, we'll put it in a package, give it to town council, and see what we can and can't do. And, you know, I think at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, we'll be able to let you folks know that, as Mr. Cabral has said, are our hands really tied on this thing, and is there much we can do? I think that, you know, PJ Keating needs to step up to the plate and try to be a better neighbor, so.
Are there any time ordinance that they can operate on?
Yeah, we've talked about that. Yeah, right now, they go all night long, we've talked about that.
Is there a time ordinance now?
No. Well, we've, we've got the ability in our bylaw to put time, time restrictions. We've, the other thing we've talked about is how many, how many vehicles can go in and out of there, even if they're open all night long? Is it unlimited vehicles all night long? I mean, you know, the state wants to do their roadwork at night, and the residents of the town of Cushinget pay the price for that, because the trucks are in and out all night long, and how many trucks? Is it five? Is it 10? Is it 150?
Who can tell? It's so loud.
Who can tell? So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that maybe we can put restrictions on, that, you know, all right, if you're going all night long, that's fine, but it's no more than this number of vehicles.
Per hour or something to that. You know, I mean, it, no, I don't. It, it's a bad spot to be in for any of you folks that have bought that property, because it, to me, if it was me living there, it wouldn't matter if I have five tailgates slamming in that, in that, I'll call it industrial park in PJ Keating's land area. If you're sleeping at 1:00 and you hear these gates slamming, and these truck bodies dropping and everything else, I know all about these vehicles, and I know they're very loud in nature. It doesn't matter to me whether I got five of them, if I wake up one or two times during the middle of the night...
Well, it's quieter in the summertime when the trees have leaves, but when a tree don't have no leaves, it's even worse.
Oh, the door windows are closed as well. When the windows are open, you actually hear more.
Sure.
All right, so February 11th, get all your neighbors there, and let's, you know, we'll go all night, and let them, let them hear what our concerns are as, as neighbors.
If we go all night, you're going to bring sandwiches?
That would pizza would be...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, if I may step out of my lane just for a moment. The, you folks have been on Dalton Street for a while.
Yeah.
And I know you've called, and you've registered concerns in the past, and you may feel like they haven't gone anywhere. They have. We, we have attempted to do the best that we can within the restrictions that we're given. The game changer is going to be that part-time health agent, paid for by you, accountable to you, working there 20 hours a week for the town, making sure that the dust isn't moving beyond their, their boundaries, and that the noise is being adhered, noise restrictions being adhered to, and light infiltration and things of that sort. We've never had that before.
But so who's been monitoring it? You, you know, you said they've been a good neighbor, but really, who?
Well, they say, they say they've been a good neighbor.
Not when you hear...
I've got tracks in my, in my foundation.
So, short of Mr. Carrier and his predecessors as the health agents, in addition to doing all this Title V and the septic and the restaurant inspections and that whole plate of responsibilities that his department has, it would be that person. This is going to be, in my opinion, having been around for a while, this is going to be a game changer, and it's one that I, I, I'm proud that this board and the health board and Mr. Carrier have really kind of taken the lead to make sure that this happens, because we've never had that before, in as long as we do.
So, what you're saying is all our complaints that we put in are basically brushed under...
No, they've looked at.
We've had, you know, similar to, again, I don't mean to have time, but when I get phone calls about blasting, you know, we take those seriously, and we investigate, and we're within their limits. So, you, you can't punish them if they're doing, if they're staying within their limits. It's frustrating for you, it's equally frustrating for us, because, you know, we're on the receiving end of those calls. This is going to be a little different. The, the game's changing a little bit, a lot, towards the town's favor. And stick with us, I think you, I think we're going to, we're going to be able to work this out.
I just, I just find it hard to believe that if we haven't been satisfied up to this point, then we're going to allow them to go further with what they want to do, bring it closer to the street, and then we're still going to be unsatisfied.
Yeah, just a couple, I just want to conclude and move on, but just a couple of things. So, now, what I, what I do want to address that though, so if we could find, Mr. Gasper's asking, the existing land use permit, if we can find a copy of that, it's going to be somewhere.
Yep.
And just, I mean, just to your point, PJ Keating's getting attention in the last two years like they've never gotten before. I mean, the, the chief, I mean, you know, monitoring the, the, monitoring the blasting, monitoring the seismic profile of the blasting, the soil board's been, been, soil board regulations have been stepped up, we've brought in consulting engineers. Nothing happens quickly in government, but, you know, we've talked with PJ Keating, you know, met with PJ Keating and the DEP in their Lakeville offices, talking about issues like this. The soil permit has language in it like it never had before, so PJ Keating knows we're not happy. Their annual permit, which is renewed on an annual basis, as annual permits are, has language in it, it never had before. So, it's happening slowly, but it's happening. And PJ Keating knows that the town of Cushinget is watching, and, and is trying to be a better neighbor. I'm not sure that, how successful they're being in that effort, but they want to hear complaints, they've established a complaint, 1-800 number, or there's a telephone number for complaints. They're trying, they're responding, they're shutting down the plant when, when wind levels are high, when, when dust is in the air, they're trying to be a better neighbor, but, you know, the, the facility is what it is, and I think there's only so much that they can do. But, you know, we're trying, and, and this is further evidence of that. But February 11th, come, tell PJ Keating what you think, tell PJ Keating what the problems there are, and hopefully we can make it better, so.
Thank you.
February 11th, tell all your friends, all your neighbors. Let's fill, let's fill a room, because when you do that, they're going to take it seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah, and don't, and don't be afraid, please don't. If you can get the word around, I know some people are intimidated about coming in front of the board of selectmen and speaking, this is not the time for that to happen. I think that this board, I know myself, we want to hear you complain. We want to know what the actual complaints are, so that maybe that night, if there's something that we haven't heard, we'll add that to the land use permit.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say, Chief?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, new business. Golf committee's here, Mr. Isaac, Mr. Flynn, welcome. Uh, do we need to make motions? Yeah, let's, well, let's do it, it can't hurt. Let's have a motion to have the, the public hearing for PJ Keating.
On February 11th. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I made a motion to hold a public hearing on the land use license for February 11th, 6:00 PM at the Council on Aging.
Second. Second, Mr. Gasper, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Isaac, welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, Julie and Lisa. I'm here to give you an update on the wage and classification for the golf course, and before we get started, I have some updates for you. We started this year reorganizing the golf committee. Dave Flynn is now chairman of the committee. Vice chairman is Manny Gulat, and I will be remained as the secretary. So, the subject be update for today is the wage and classification update. In particular, is the one position, the second assistant superintendent position. Back in March of last year, I presented an update to the selectmen, and had the selectmen approve the various grades for the maintenance operations. The second assistant at that time was proposed to be a grade four, startling salary of about At about that time, we had to replace the second assistant position.
Sorry, Mr. Isaac, this is the first time we're looking at this, so I don't, I don't know what some of your numbers are on, on this sheet, and I apologize, but we just received this 35 minutes ago.
All right. So, anyway, the second assistant position, assistant left the golf course, and we've been spending the whole summer into the fall to replace that person with no success. At that time, Steve Tybals was saying that the salary was just too low. So, me, Chairman Gulat, and myself agreed with Mr. Tybalt to find out a reasonable candidate and make them a reasonable offer, and see if we can fill the position. We did that. The position is now paying $17 an hour. And that's, and Julie brought that to our attention, that there was a conflict between the grade four, what the original payment was, and what we're paying. What we did is we went back, and the original evaluation of that position was done by myself, Chairman Gulat, and the former town administrator, Brian Noble. So, we agreed to reevaluate the position. Myself, Manny Gulat, and Dana Presposzewski was part of the committee, we sat down and went over, reevaluate all of the positions, and we reevaluate them relative, relative to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, so we can get a good comparison.
Have any of these other numbers changed, Mr. Isaac?
Are you?
You've got, you've got multiple, have any of these other grades changed, or just that position?
No, no.
Thank you.
And so, what we did with that reevaluation, we come, come up with a new point evaluation of 288 points for the, the second assistant, and that seems to fit in very well with what we're paying that person in the grade five category. That's a grade five category. So, in order to straighten this out, we're looking for your approval to move that position from a grade four to a grade five.
Oh, I'm sorry, this, thank you for this. I mean, this is, I'm familiar with wage and classification study, and it's nice that you did this, and it's fairly scientific. I know I've been through the process on a few positions, and, I mean, you're comfortable with, I mean, you needed to pay more, but when you went through this exercise, it did justify a grade five based on the metrics?
Before we did the evaluation, kind of in a vacuum, just the second assistant, and now we can compare it to what the superintendent should be doing, and what the assistant superintendent. So, it's kind of a relative level of responsibilities. And it, it's nice to see that it did work out.
So, you filled the position already?
We filled the position.
At a salary level, which is in line with our wage and classification study?
Being trained as, as we speak.
Other questions, Congress, Chairman?
Mr. Isaac, just basically, and the committee just saying that they may have changed to the wage and classification for this one position, I don't think it's something that they would be doing on an everyday basis or a yearly basis. I mean, we'd have to, I'd like a copy of that wage and classification that the golf course did. I know we received one some time back ago.
Was it March of last year?
Yeah, sometime back ago, but I, I understand what you did now, the numbering effect that you have here, it's $2 an hour, I don't think it's going to break the golf course for $2 an hour. Is it, Mr. Flynn?
Not in my opinion, no.
Mr. Chairman, I should say, congratulations.
And thank you.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it.
Do you want, do we need to vote this, or if we do need to vote this? All right, so we need a motion to make a change in the second assistant, second assistant, what's the position?
Superintendent.
Second assistant, balsa technician?
Is that correct?
Yeah, slash.
Okay, from a, from a grade four to a grade five, could I get that motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Second, further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you, Mr. Isaac. We have something else, just still on the agenda with...
Good night.
Thank you, thank you. Leasing, equipment leasing, equipment leasing.
Yeah, the next on the, the agenda is a three-year leasing, five-year lease discussion. These really are part of the planning for the FY 2021 budget plan. And it's part, I handed out a, a construct, a kind of a plan that, that the golf committee is going to try to follow to reach the debt payoff of the construction debt, which is FY 2028. And the first part of that is to begin planning for the FY 21 budget. I won't go into details of the plan, but basically, it's got three motives. One is to maintain the golf course in excellent operating conditions. That will attract golfers and will generate the revenue we need to pay off the debt. But what we need to do is to replace all of the equipment between now and the end of 2028, and we need to do that gradually, so that we can maintain a healthy cost cash reserve for the golf course. And the first things we need to do is, we need to deal with it, again, the business plan for FY 21. The first thing on the agenda is the golf cart lease. We have a payment that will be due on July 1, that's $39,000 payment. In addition to that, there's a balloon payment of $77,000. That was the result of us attempting to use a five-year lease, which didn't work out, so we had a three-year lease plus a balloon payment.
Where's the $79,000?
Seventy-seven.
Is that the sum of the multiple numbers?
No, it's, it's not in it.
It's not here? Okay, okay.
What we're proposing is that we turn that 70, that $77,000 payment, roll it into a three-year lease. Effective the FY 22, 3, and 4, and that, that is in the plan.
Mr. DeRoche.
So, that's that $29,951, almost $30,000, spread out over the next three years.
I don't know exactly what the exact number is, but once we get approval to enter the three-year lease, we'll know exactly what that is.
So, that's just a rough number, Mr. Isaac?
Correct.
Because we talked 77, if I take the $29, it's basically 30 grand, it's 90 grand, just under 90 grand, so it's about a $13,000 interest payment?
Correct.
On three years? Do you know the terms of what the borrowing rate would be for the golf course? I mean, it seems kind of high, don't it? $90,000, 13 grand for three years?
This is just an estimate, too, based on...
Okay. Okay, so numbers to be changed. We'll look at it that way, but we understand, the board understands the concept of... The leasing company wouldn't commit until they knew that we were actually going to enter it, and then they'll, they can finalize their offer, and... Sure.
I think banks need to make money, sounds fair to me.
They make plenty of money.
Maybe, just one quick question, during those years, '22, '23, '24, we still have to have a cart lease fee? We still have an additional fee on top of this balloon payment?
No.
No, it's a balloon payment.
It's a balloon payment, okay.
So, essentially, the golf carts was a five-year lease, but we're not able to enter into five-year lease, five-year leases, so instead of having a fourth and fifth payment, they were under obligation to make a balloon payment for those final payments, to keep it three years.
Oh, we can now, because we voted?
We can now.
We're back, we're in.
But I think, you know, and looking at the, I don't know, the capital improvements and things like that, the, the golf carts, I don't think it would be helpful to go out five years from now. You're, that's why they're looking at a three-year lease instead, to kind of clear out that remaining balloon payment, and I'm sure Ed will get to it soon, but they're looking at five-year leases for other capital items going forward.
Okay, I mean, just general, general concept, I would think, is the lease payment doesn't exceed the useful life of the equipment.
Exactly.
If the carts die in five years, we don't want a 10-year lease on them.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Isaac, continue. Will you jump in there?
No, no. So, as part of, part of the plan, what's also is to begin turning over the equipment, maintenance equipment, and start it, and we're planning on starting this fiscal year. And the first move will be to replace one fairway mower and one rough mower. And that will start in FY 21, and then FY 23, to replace another fairway mower and another rough mower. Then FY 24, we will enter another lease for five greens, greens mower and tees mower and one sprayer. When we, when we put those into the calculation, it will, it will be spreading out the payments and such that in any annual year, we will have a reasonable cash reserve. And that's one of the goals. So on FY 21, what we wanted to, we started out entering a five-year lease for the fairway mower and the rough mower But what's, what we decided to do at the last golf committee is propose that we enter into a five-year lease for one rough mower, which is roughly $72,000. And to purchase, in proposing that we purchase the fairway mower. Now what's happened is that.
How much is the fairway mower, what's that?
The fairway mower is $53,000.
Why would you buy one, lease the other one?
Right.
Okay.
And what we're proposing doing is that we currently have, from our last town meeting, Article 9, that which the town appropriated up to $150,000 for capital expenses. Such, and right now, we have on our list of activities to do approximately $40,000 of that 150. And as you recall back, last year, we agreed that any spending the golf committee would, would propose, the Board of Selectment would approve, and the Finance Committee would approve. So what we're suggesting is, right now, our plan is to spend $40,000 of that 150, and that's it. We're going to purchase a tent. We are going to, we re-layout the site for golf outings, golf carts. We're going to build three forward tees. And we're going to construct a, a dirt road cart path for hole number 13. And we, we think that's all we can achieve in the, in the rest of the season, golf season. And our proposal is that we use some of that 150 to purchase the fairway mower cash payment to avoid the interest payment and also to avoid having to repair the current fairway mower that we had, that we have, which is estimated to be between $3,000 to $5,000 in repair work. And the manufacturer of the fairway mower has agreed to deliver them in April and deliver the rough mower in April and allowed us to enter the five-year lease in FY 21. And now that lease is estimated to be about $16,000.
Sixteen thousand a year, yes.
Yeah, 16,000 a year. So whereas we had in this plan, $27,000, well now we'll be paying cash and entering the five-year lease, which will now be only $16,000.
So the 27 number you have here projected on the five-year plan for the one rough, one fairway, the 27 becomes 16? Because you want to do a, you want to take from surplus the $30,000 bucks or whatever you just said?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, I'm sorry, $53,000 to purchase the fairway mower cash?
Correct.
And then, so you're going to be bringing a proposal to the Board to vote on the $40,000 for the tent, the path, so the forward tees, moving the forward tees, the Board gives that blessing. And you're also going to be requesting, so it's about $95,000 bucks. Let's just give it a couple extra grand to play around with, about 95 out of the 150. That was appropriated at the last year's town meeting, right? And spend that, so you'll, you'll actually drop that 27 down to like 16, so it's $10,000. So it's 50, this is your 50 grand.
Exactly. We've had several positive years in a row. We're not effectively, you know, pay ourselves by paying cash for the lesser of the two mowers. I mean, the lesser is still $50,000. But to me, I would rather, since we can afford it now, pay that, not lock ourselves into a recurring fee. And it's a machine that's going to have a lifespan beyond the five years anyway. So we've looked, and I think, believe the current one is about eight to nine years old anyway. So we can just buy it now, keep it for the next eight to nine years. To me, I felt that was a better financially and then, you know, but we didn't have, I didn't want to spend all of that cash, me personally, to buy both of them. So that's why we came up with the compromise to lease one, buy the other one, and hopefully keep them both longer term anyway.
Can I turn that around a little bit? Did you consider leasing all of it? I mean, I like leasing just because it spreads the cost of the equipment out over an extended period of time. And, I mean, we don't know what the operations of the golf course. I mean, I'm sure you considered that thought about it.
Is that with the 27?
Interest is cheap, I mean, it's 3% to borrow maybe?
I looked at it from paying ourselves back. So if we could pay cash because we have it now, effectively say, take the, yeah, not spend it at all in the budget and basically be banking it over the next five years as opposed to putting it towards something else. So then effectively the 3% to 4% interest comes back to us and not to a bank. I know you're the banker and you don't like to hear that.
I like that plan. But I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I like spreading the cost out over. And I, I, you know, your answer's not the wrong answer. I mean, it's, we've got the cash, we can do it. I just like maintaining the reserves and spreading the cost over. I, you know, what you're proposing is fine, but just want to make sure you, want to make sure you considered the other alternative.
Can I ask a question on reserves? You know, I spoke today, because I'm kind of the same league preserving your surplus, right? So it shows on the bottom, our reserve, we'll just go with fiscal year 2020. It shows that we have $486,000 in the reserve fund as of 2020, budget year 2020, right? That 150 taken out of that 486, or is that 486 minus the 150?
I believe that's after the 150, I mean, so.
It's already.
Correct. So there'd be six in change?
Well, it hasn't been certified yet for FY 20, but it's, I think the number I gave you is closer to 400.
399.
Yeah.
But the 150 is already out of this number, correct?
Correct, and the 100.
And the 100 is already out of this number.
Is out of that number. So you really take the 399 plus roughly 250, the total total, roughly 649. But we have plans to spend, you know, 95 of the 150, and then the other 100 is just truly, you know, reserved for this year. But if we don't spend it, goes right back in. So total, totally, it's about 649, the reserves right now.
Okay, so it's better, it's a, it's a better scenario than what we're looking at here, is what I'm getting to. It's not 486 minus the 150.
It's funny, this been, you know, through town meeting, approved to be used if we need it. However, it has not been used, so.
Correct.
One number is taking it out because it's been approved to use, but the other, the 649 is what it is because we haven't spent what's been approved.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that this is, this number's a good number.
And the debt paid in 2028?
It seems like it's a good number, you know, all things being equal.
All things being equal. And, and I forgot to mention before, the, just the results year-to-date in revenue. From this summer, we had a good season. We're roughly $61,000 up over the plan. So it looks like we won't need that 100,000 reserve. And that will go back.
Wait, what, to offset a loss? Is that what you, is that why you're saying that? Because you don't spend a reserve without?
Well, there's 100,000 in the approved budget for this year. I say like, all the expenses we expect to have, and then 100,000 over here.
On top of the 150? So you get 100, plus the article five, I know what you're saying, so that reserve. But that, that again, cannot be spent without the Board of Selectment approving it.
Exactly. But we're seeing expenses beyond the budgeted expenses.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But we anticipate not needing to, to fit to that, even if we.
Yeah, that's the plan. We have 61 ahead right now. So the future plan looks pretty good. We won't need any, but.
Right. Right, the year-to-date revenue exceeding the plan so far by $61,000, all else being equal, you know, would more than offset any unforeseen expenditures.
So, so is there any way that, seeing how things have changed, can you make us another one of these for our records? And, and when you do that, can you just look at, because you have some footnotes up top. It says assumptions, and it says labor expense increases basically 2% a year. Non-labor expenses increases 2% a year. And when I do the math, I look at the year 2020, I went fiscal year 2020 over to 2021, 2%. That's not 2%, it's much greater than 2%. Significantly.
Well, for the next three years, I've added in the extra pay increase for the minimum wage increase. So we added 2% plus.
So we're at 1275 now. What are we at, 15, aren't we?
No, 12.
What are we at?
We're 12, we're going to 12, oh, sorry, for January, we went to 1275, and then I think it's.
1275 is the state, but what are we at? I thought we raised that, I thought the.
We have to follow the state.
No, no, we can, the Board can say that we want to pay a dollar. The Board did it years ago with the Golf Committee, it said we want to stay a dollar ahead of the minimum wage rate.
Well, we've always done, the jobs that were paying minimum wage, were staying with the state minimum wage. But when it went up a dollar, the other jobs that were just above that also went up a dollar to keep the differential the same between a quote, true entry-level job, and then the next one up, so.
So it's 2% plus the 8% that the wages.
Yeah.
These guys are making 10.
That's why I want to look at the wage and classification, because I don't know if that's something that, you know, you're keeping that disparity that great and, you know, somebody that's getting paid $100,000, I don't think you need to give them the extra buck versus somebody that's getting paid $30,000 or $20,000.
It didn't go to the superintendent, but the, like, the next level up of groundskeepers and workers, because they were making 12 when they were making 10. Now if that went to 11, that differential did adjust at that point.
I understand, this, this, this number's pretty, so one of the numbers comes out. If I did the math wrong, right, on 19 to 20, 2% would be $7,800. This increase says $31,000, so I would hope that's not the case. So the second line item down. So I just would ask that, if we look at the spreadsheet, we.
Yeah, those are non-operating expenses though.
We reevaluated.
That's non-labor expenses, that's the.
Okay.
It's non-labor.
What does this say? Non-labor increase, 2%. They're up here saying.
Oh, non-labor.
So, so can you explain, what's, it says maintenance operator or operations, non-labor expenses, but you've got it up here as the assumption says, non-labor expenses increase 2%. So what is that?
Say that again.
See, the second line item down, Mr. Isaac, it says maintenance operators, operations, labor. So that's the first one up top on the assumptions, 2% increase. But then the second one down, the one I'm referring to, that's a much greater increase, says maintenance, looks like operations, non-labor expenses. Can you, what is, what is that line item?
That's.
Fertilizer.
Yeah, fertilizer, food.
Why does, why is non-labor expenses, you just, you just put in non-labor expenses increasing at 2% a year? Because it's just, it's just the denominator you use in to say that purchasing power is, I'm going to lose 2% every year? Is that what it is?
Exactly, the cost of fertilizer, pesticides, insecticides, historically.
Okay. It's directly escalating at that percentage.
I don't have it in front of me, but also part of the increase is taking on the periodic leases of refurbishing the equipment over the next couple of years. That's also, you know, not within the 2%. So if you follow that down, you'll see those nine items as well.
Yeah, so it's not labor. So the only labor, the only one that we have as far as labor goes, as far as employees go, I should say, is the maintenance operations labor, right?
Have you done your 2021 budget yet? You're working on that, it's official, right?
Yeah, okay, so that's why now one line item, the 2% is skewed way off because of the cost of different things.
Exactly.
So we'll just, we'll just take a look at it. And if you could redo this, I guess, if we're going to do the 53,000 buyout.
The intent is to redo this on an ongoing basis.
Yeah.
So we know exactly where we are. What the reserve looks like, are we maintaining, and what options we have.
Yeah, I love, I love the long-term plan. I think this is exactly what you got to do with the golf course.
I like it, I just, I'm cautiously, because trying to project out, I would say, more than three years in any business is extremely difficult. So I commend you in your efforts, in the Golf Committee and their efforts in doing this practice. And you have to, because you have capital items that you need to be purchasing, i.e. the mowers and things of that nature. Mr. Isaac, I think I talked to you, I don't know, three or four, five months ago, and you said, Kev, things nine years old, how much more? And I, and I agree, for the amount of use this gets, it's not like your commercial mower or your regular lawnmower at your house. 10 years is pretty good to get out of one of these mowers and, you know. So I like the plan, I'm hoping that the plan will stick, but I'm always cautiously optimistic and.
Right, and somewhere in this plan, we need to put, build a clubhouse, so.
Yeah, well.
So you tried to determine where, along this line, does the clubhouse slide in?
Well, we've been, you know, we talked, Ed, a lot, for a lot of years now, we've been talking about a clubhouse, right? The difference that that clubhouse can make to the golf operations. And I think that everybody's in somewhat of an agreement. And I think that we've all kind of pulled back on, you know, that idea because of the debt, right? And we wanted to make sure that we could satisfy the current debt before we went off and bit off another chunk of debt. But I think that maybe we, the town might be getting into that spot where if it's not so far out anymore, maybe we'd be looking at.
Even though the construction debt, we say 2028, if I recall it correctly, the last large payment is really 2027. There's a large payment in 2020, but it's a small payment.
Yep.
So we're starting, we're almost at 2021. 2027 is the last big payment, it's really only six years at this point. So barring anything catastrophic, I think it's good to start planning to ease into that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because as we get, say, three years of finish. If we're still sitting on 650, well, not that you want to lose money, but if you start to ease into what your next big plan is going to be, knowing that your big payment is going to drop off.
Of course.
We just want to keep it on the horizon.
You know what your reserve are, you know what your reserve is, you know when the mortgage is going to disappear.
Exactly.
You're comfortable with your revenue projections, maybe.
Mr. Flynn, you hit right on it, right? It, it's going to be a couple of years construction time, right? We can figure it out whether it's going to be a modular place or whatnot, we'll figure out the best way to do this without killing, killing golf users. You know, hopefully we'll get a good deal instead of doing the prevailing wage things. Maybe we start thinking outside the box. I know the committee's probably started thinking of that. I know I, I've run some ideas by different committee members on how to do this, so. And I think it's a massive revenue generator, right? So I think that, you know, you might look at it and say, I don't want to put out a quarter of a million dollars a year, but I would argue that that clubhouse will bring in a quarter of a million dollars a year all day long. So it'll be, even if it's a zero-sum game at the beginning, that's good.
Exactly.
Gentlemen, anything else?
Julie, what do you need?
I was going to say, I think that they'll need for you to vote for the leases, if you guys are.
You want approval of that now, or you?
Yeah. In order, in order to put the business plan together, we need.
21, but 21 only?
First of all, let's do the three-year lease, because I think that one's easier, right? So taking the, the current balloon payment that they have of the 77,000, that would be this July.
For the golf carts.
For the golf carts that we already have.
Kicking that out.
Kicking that out for three more years on a new lease.
Okay, motion to do that, Jim?
So moved. I understand, I understand, but you know, it's, I like things changed on paper, so I keep good records. So I keep good records of what we're doing. And I think that when they, when they do this and we're expending money out of the reserve line item or surplus, however you want to put it, because the reserve line item is surplus, it's nice to keep that in a file so we keep good records.
Yeah, we'll get the lease, right? We'll get it.
Right, I think at this point, we're looking for the approval that you guys are on board with. So then they can go and say, leasing company, Toro, leasing company, not Toro, but I'm.
We've got that, we either pay the balloon or we kick out the lease three years, so this one, this one's easy.
So we have to go ahead and talk to the leasing company and the car company and say, listen, we're not going to make the balloon payment. We are going to basically refinance.
When's the balloon due, Mr. Flynn?
It's in July 1, or July.
We want to get this out of the way.
77, we're in balloon payment, yeah.
So we got a motion, do we have a motion second? You have a motion second, Mr. DeRosa?
Second.
Further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we've got the, we've got the fairway mower and the rough mower we need to buy and lease. And is that the decision for now? Is, when are you doing that?
20 to the budget, 2021 budget, so. We'll talk about that in the budget.
Well, in the issue, we need to take delivery of the mowers, both mowers, by roughly April 1st this season to lower any repair of the old pieces of equipment.
And you've got money available in the budget? That was approved already for 2020, 2020.
Purchasing, it's using funds, it's already appropriated and available.
It's already appropriated. We already, we already talked about doing this when you did your budget. That's the $150,000.
Correct.
You set aside, so the money's already there to do this.
That's 150, see, this is where it gets confusing, that's why I like things on paper. The 150 is from Article 9 in 2020 that we've already approved from an article.
Right.
So it's not in the budget, it's out of an article.
Right.
So what's, what's the request, so that we get this straight? You're asking for what? Out of that, you want to spend that money from that article?
To purchase a mower, fairway mower.
That was the 53K.
53,000.
Okay.
Plus the lease of the, plus the lease of the rough mower also?
Oh, the rough, rough mower will be part of business plan 21, which is near approval sometime to enter into that five-year lease.
For the budget, so if you want to push that out?
You want to buy the fairway, you want a motion tonight? Let me make sure this show this is straight, so that the Golf Committee and everybody's happy. Out of the $150,000 from the Article 9 from 2020. Out of the $150,000 from the Article Nine from 2020, that was already been approved by town meeting, in the board of selectmen, you're requesting that the board of selectmen spend $53,000 for a fairway mower.
Right.
So that would bring the amount down to what, 97?
Exactly, which we had only 40 of the other 97.
I'll make a motion to expend 53,000, is that good? 53, you want a couple grand more, or 55? Just to give you room, if you don't spend it...
Go 55, just so he's got, he's got room in case, yeah.
Just in case there's something changing, 55.
Yeah, don't get one with air conditioning, just because...
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for the golf committee to expend $55,000 for the purpose of buying a fairway mower.
Mr. Dero, second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then the remaining piece is just your approval, in theory at least, to then enter the five-year lease on the rough mower, because we would want to get that started to take delivery in April. Making the annual payments, it's really only 48 months on paper, but you make five payments, but part of the deal would be, you know, we wouldn't owe the first payment till July, the next fiscal year's budget.
Okay.
In order to start the golf season with it, we want to take delivery in April, so in order to take delivery in April, we need to get the commitment for the purchase, and then to get the equipment in, delivered to us.
And then you bill now, you ask them to bill you out on July 1st, send you a bill so it comes out of your budget, you're actually operating budget.
Right, so the leasing company, you know, you're essentially, you know, you're four, three, four months into it before the first payment is due, and then each payment is due 12 months after that.
Okay.
Any motions, and that was a 70-some odd thousand dollar, right? What was that number?
72.
What was the budget impact from that?
That's one of the...
16 grand, 16 a grand.
16 grand, because we're buying the other mower 55 cash now.
And this one's 16,000 a year on the lease.
So that'd be about, so we should see that, the rough mower come in, the lease for the rough mower come in at 16, 17 grand, right?
Exactly, and in the update on your budget, you'll see the $27,000 figure, whatever, we do step to the 16, once we get the exact, exact payment from the leasing company.
So you want a motion to enter into a five-year lease for the rough mower?
Correct.
Correct.
I get that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Isaac, as always, thank you very much for everything you do for that golf course. You are very instrumental in your, your position over there, and I think that a lot of people admire you, even though they might not say it, but I do, and I appreciate your time and effort for that golf course over all these years.
Mr. Isaac puts a lot of work in over there.
He sure does. And I, and I'd like to recognize him for that hard work on camera, so thank you, Mr. Isaac, and, and all the golf committee members for that matter. But Mr. Isaac goes above and beyond constantly, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, moving on, new business, surplus equipment. We've got a, in the highway department, a 2001 Dodge Ram pickup, deemed unusable, usable, and we want to dispose of it as surplus equipment in this process, where we advertise that to the world, and if anybody wants it, apparently it's just sitting unused, is that accurate?
It's sitting unused, it's, according to the DPW, it's running on something that could be fixed and used. And so right now, it's just taking up room in their, in their shed for, for things for the winter, so.
19 years old?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go, go, go.
I don't, I know that they, we have these little forms here for the declaration of surplus property, and it has a condition code, and they gave us a list of condition codes, and basically W means worthless. I think it's scrap, so, you know, I don't know if the code, which, I don't know if what they're doing with it, they just junk it in and get $0, but scrap vehicles are usually worth a few hundred bucks, so I would probably code it differently and put it as ask for scrap and get a couple hundred bucks. I don't know if that's the intent, or do they plan on donating it to some, you know...
No, I think you're right. I think they're planning to scrap theirs.
We bought this used in 2009, it said, purchase date 4/30/2009.
That's a scrap.
This is salvaged, but I didn't...
Yes, I'm sorry, salv, yes, yeah, correct. So it says salvage, or it says personal property that has some value, and its basic material content, which scrap is.
I'm glad we can change that, but I do believe it's...
We bought this used in 2009, it said, we bought it used trash. Title says purchase date 2009.
We have, we have, I don't know if that's the case, but we have bought used equipment for the DPW.
Yeah, basically, the DPW said that, when the last time they went to get this sticker on it, it was...
Oh, it's junk. There's no question, it's junk, but scrap, it's going to be worse, it's worse.
Julie and I actually thought about maybe for the park department, but...
No, it's junk. I don't even think it has floors in it anymore, like Flintstones, which you can see on the floor.
Is there a motion, a motion to get rid of it by the best means appropriate for the town?
Motion to declare the 2001 Dodge Ram truck pickup as surplus property.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators' report?
Nothing.
Nothing.